This, this is a pictorial overview of um. Pre-World War Two camps in San Diego County Council. First, a bit about me. So I joined Cub Scouts uh when I was eight years old, nineteen sixty-nine. I took my full seven years to make Eagle Scout. And for the last fifteen years or so, I've been a committee chair of a Sea Scout ship. And my collecting interests are pretty narrow in that it's. Any and everything from San Diego or Imperial County. So that's San Diego County Council. San Diego Imperial Council, Desert Pacific Council, Imperial Yuma Council, and Desert Trails Council. So OA. Community strips, CSPs, camp patches, event patches, unit memorabilia, pictures, paper. I have about two hundred and fifty San Diego County Council coffee cups. I also collect chemistry merit badge and jamboree ceramics. So first, a bit about my source material. So I have, well, the council owns. The first scout exec's scrapbook. At least they think it's his scrapbook, but I'm not quite sure because it has a bunch of stuff in the twenties from Hawaii with some gaps where he was in San Diego. I also have his scrapbooks from uh for the first thirty years of of the council. I also traded for a couple of scrapbooks from uh just newspaper clippings from the thirties. A thing on scrapbooks is unfortunately, you cut out the the newspaper article and there's no date associated with it. So you hope they put it in the scrapbook in some sort of chronological order, but that's not not always the case. I'm also pretty good about looking on eBay for various things, uh San Diego related history-wise, and also newspaper dot com. Although um the San Diego Union and its predecessor papers are not part of newspaper dot com. And their fee schedule isn't conducive to go window shopping. So I don't have much except for what is in the scrapbooks. A bit about San Diego scouting to start with. So the the council actually owns this uh Scout Master Appointment. Certificate, uh so Dexter Rao, the first uh scout uh Scout Master in um San Diego. He's this fellow here, uh this kid with a wig wag flag actually ended up being the uh president of the University of Southern California. For ten years in the fifties and sixties. Uh just to give you an idea, the city of San Diego had seventeen thousand. Population in nineteen ten. And in nineteen seventeen, when the council started, there were two hundred and nine scouts. Uh in nineteen eighteen, when they recharters up to eighteen uh up to about eight hundred and eighty. But it didn't reach two thousand scouts until sometime in the thirties, when it bounced around seventeen hundred to two thousand scouts. The council itself, the first attempt to start a council was as a Class B council without a scout exec in nineteen fourteen. That didn't go well. And then they started um they re-registered or re-chartered as a Class A council. With Elwood Barley as a scout exec. Uh he served from nineteen seventeen to nineteen forty. So the camps I'm going to talk about, first, I guess my definition of what a camp is. Uh so this is where the council actually was the primary, was primarily responsible for the program of the camp. So there were, especially in the first twenty or thirty years of the council, there were a lot of troop long-term camps. They're not covered in this. And it's sort of it, looking at camp, sometimes it leads to confusion about dates. Because a lot of times they use the same location. So the camps, these are the camps we're gonna talk about, a couple in Malboa Park. Camps in Del Mar, Palomar Mountain, Point Loma, Hubbard Grove, Camp Fletcher, Camp Fenton, and Wauka Kush. And none of these council camps exist anymore as a ongoing operation. So uh because San Diego can be uh. If you're not familiar with it, so Balboa, downtown San Diego is right here at number seven. Balboa Park is the first place we're going to visit. So uh so the city of San Diego itself, the downtown where the mayor's offices and everything is just. Slightly down into the left of of this map. Uh so the the park was established in eighteen sixty-two, and then with the opening of the Panama Canal, the city decided they were going to host a. Panama Cana- uh California exposition. And they, so they changed the name of the park. Uh to Balboa Park after the first European to view the Pacific Ocean, uh Vázquez Balboa. As part of the expo, uh Santa Fe Railroad spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars building. What was called the Painted Desert, which was a um educational. Uh sort of area that concentrated on Native American, southwest Native American things. Uh so there there were three scout camps in the park itself. The first one up here, which is now currently called Morley Field, that lasted a couple of years. Then Indian Village, which is what the tourists to the expo essentially called the Painted Desert. And then the current Boy Scout Council Office and Camp here, Camp Balboa at number three. That uh we started um. Planning for in early forties and the dedication was nineteen forty-seven. And we're not going to talk about that camp. Because it's after the war. So the the first camp, which it wasn't until I actually read the um scrapbooks. That I knew this camp existed. So these three gentlemen were the prime movers of it. Uh John Gillen, who was a prominent merchant uh in San Diego. EF Heller, who was uh, I believe he was in banking, but he was the council president nineteen twenty-four. And this fellow here Duncan McKinnon, who was at the time the superintendent of public schools in San Diego. And he also served as a council president nineteen twenty to twenty-one. So they asked the the Balboa Park Commission if they could use um a Calvary Camp that was up in the uh. Northeast part of the council of of the park wasn't in use. And the park commission said yes. Uh the San Diego Rotary provided a lot of the financial support. It probably didn't hurt that these three gentlemen were high up in the leadership of San Diego Rotary. Uh the the adult scout volunteers provided the labor to build. Essentially, it was one building, this um administrative building, if you will. The camp was mostly used just for weekend camping and council competitions. There there was no long-term camp at this facility. And the camp stopped being used. When the council moved Indian Village a couple of years later. So they actually published a schedule for what the scouts were going to do when they showed up at camp. They show up on Friday night. And so, you know, you have revelry, flag ceremony. For me, it seems there was a lot of time for inspection and um cleanliness. But mostly what they did at the camp during the program time was in uh instruction in scout craft. And then instruction for second class and first class. So there were a lot of hikes in the park area. Assembly at seven. I'm not sure what accompanied by the usual gun retreat meant. But the idea was to send the scouts home at five thirty, tired but happy. So there are a number of pictures of the camp. So the the this is the uh. The administration building. This is nineteen eighteen. So you can see that about half the scouts aren't in uniform, but this scout right here, who's not in uniform. He is wearing a patrol flash, which I found interesting. He's the only one who's wearing one here. Uh so this is presumably one of the inspections they had. This lower picture is uh, I guess, some sort of group lunch. And in the back, if you know anything about San Diego. This is Florida Canyon behind. So there there were lots of uh scouts there. So most of the tents were army pup tent type things uh with just open ground fires. A lot of eucalyptus trees in Balboa Park. So again, here's here's the um. It administration building. This was a field day. These are presumably felt banners. Here in this picture, this uh this Colburn Cup uh for drill competition was apparently the thing he wanted to win. But this scout here and this scout here, they're uh wearing the Liberty Lone uh medals. So I think this picture's from nineteen, well, nineteen nineteen, it's dated there. And one thing I think it's sort of interesting, what's the place look like now? So this is, well, this is from Google Maps, but this is Morley Field. Uh there's a outdoor velodrome here and frisbee golf and tennis courts behind it, but it it it's part of the park. So there's been no development essentially for the last hundred years, which is probably a good thing. Uh so they then moved to Indian Village, which again was short-term camp. So the the although Indian Village was used, there was no formal use of it. Prior to uh at after the the close of the expo and before the scouts took over. So in in March of nineteen nineteen, Ernest Ernest Houghton Seaton uh showed up to kick off a drive. To uh have it as a youth group. He, this is after he had stepped down as the Chief Scout. So he was there as the Chief of the Woodcraft League of America. According to the newspaper reports, he conducted some weird ceremonies, uh but he had the youth who were there. Uh dress up in Native American garb and do some dancing and type stuff. So the park commission gave the council permission to use desert, uh the Painted Desert. For an indefinite amount of time for no fee. And the the city paid for the water. The the council had to pay for the electricity. So in June of nineteen twenty, they took full possession of Indian Village. As their headquarters area and program area, although the the camp still remain or the park still remained. Open to the public, uh which is actually the case now with the current Balboa Park. So half of the expo buildings were built as temporary structures, including Indian Village. It was essentially cement over forms. Um and by nineteen twenty-seven. The the structures were getting pretty rundown. So um a major campaign was um. Initiated to rebuild parts of Indian Village for the Boy Scout use. So the city uh contributed a lot, so did its uh public. And then a lot of the civic organizations. So at that time, they added a swimming pool, mess hall, and a bunch of general upgrades. Shortly after this, in nineteen thirty-five, the city tried another expo. Uh this is the California Pacific International Expo. And there was multi-use of Indian Village when the Native American groups were asked back to continue their demonstrations. The scouts also in parts of the um pueblo structure had displays. So they they continued with short-term camping and competitions until shortly after Pearl Harbor. The council had been in talks with the city about moving to another part of of the park. And right after World War Two, they they moved their council offices and the whole Indian Village and most of Balboa Park was turned over to the military. Uh for the duration of the war. And after the war, the fire department decided that the um. Structures were just not salvageable, and so they burned it for training. So this, this, the bottom picture here is Indian Village. The previous weekend camp was just above the picture. On the top right here is where that that structure was at. These structures here are the start of the San Diego Zoo. So this was in nineteen sixteen. But uh so this is the pueblo area. There were cliff cliff dwellings here and here. And also in here, this is the the um heather that was here. The swimming pool was eventually built off the picture here. This top picture is from the Second Annual Field Meet in nineteen twenty-two. This is what I use a lot of times in my background, but it it was easy to fit five hundred to a thousand scouts in this area. Because it was fairly large. This is just some of the pictures of the scouts occupying it. Again, you see a lot of military surplus tents. Uh this picture in the upper right is the dedication of the flagpole after the nineteen. This is in nineteen twenty-eight, after the fundraising and some of the renovations. The governor of California did the dedication here. Uh the picture below it is also of the same event. And I think the governor is this fellow right here. There was um. Sleeping indoors and outdoors. I mean, San Diego has a pretty moderate climate. So again, there was lots of drill and inspections here. Some sort of huge ball to keep scouts occupied. This lower picture in the right here is of a wireless contest. Or demonstration, apparently uh radio was quite new, so there were a lot of demonstrations, a bit of an obstacle course. So there was camping either on the field itself, in your own tent. Or there were lots of lodging within the the uh pueblo itself. This is the actual council office on the edge of the the pueblo. And this is the swimming pool that was built in nineteen twenty-seven. This building here is um Roosevelt Middle School. It still exists. The current council camp is in this general vicinity right here. So this picture here is um. San Diego County Council didn't do a good job keeping its records. So this, one of these two scouts here is the first Eagle Scout in the council. This, this is, this is from nineteen nineteen. Uh when we were still at the, when the council still was on Morley Field, but they used Indian Village. So Wayne Haggerman is in some um notebooks, the first Eagle Scout. But this isn't, who supposedly made it nineteen seventeen, which I think this picture would suggest he isn't. He's wearing a Liberty Lone Medal in nineteen nineteen. And one would think he'd be wearing an Eagle Scout medal equal as an Eagle Scout. This scout here, or this assistant scout master here is David Wilt, who was in Troop Fifteen at the time. He made Eagle Scout in nineteen twenty. So I I think that this scout is actually the first Eagle Scout in the council. If you remember, a year ago, Ryan Besher's um presentation, the the. Southern California Scouts had an older scout conference. Uh these two pack, the the this is a leather patch. These two are the two variations of it, one with green print and one with black print. The these are the only known patches that are associated with Indian Village. Uh and here's the whole group that that came down from Southern California or from San Diego to go to the older scout conference. And this is what the area looks like now. This building here is the War Memorial Building, which is essentially an empty banquet hall. Or meeting rooms. Uh but again, this is part of the park, so there are no. Uh essentially, in the last fifty years, there's been nothing built uh in Balboa Park except for renovating uh current structures. So the first camp we're gonna visit, long-term camp, is Camp Del Mar. So in 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 the twenty twenty census, Del Mar has five thousand citizens. So you can imagine it wasn't too big uh in nineteen uh eighteen or nineteen nineteen. So it's about twenty-five miles from San downtown San Diego to Del Mar. Uh the Coast Highway one oh one at this point wasn't built here. So but there was a train that went through. So on a good day, it takes about forty-five minutes to get from downtown San Diego to Del Mar based on traffic. So I can't really imagine what it was like a hundred years ago. But this was advertised as a training camp. So and it was held in Del Mar from nineteen eighteen to nineteen twenty. Nineteen nineteen, it was called Camp West. It was near Stratford Inn, which was um a development company built. Essentially a resort with a pier and an indoor pool. Uh this, this was arranged through Colonel Ed Fletcher, who worked for the development company. Ed Fletcher was very important for San Diego. He uh, he started as a salesman in East County of San Diego. He was responsible for uh a lot of the roads being built. And he was um. Uh responsible for a lot of the reservoir structure that's currently keeps San Diego in some water. Uh he he eventually became a state senator and was responsible for the legislation that started the San Diego Water Authority. So at the camp, they were, they had three two-week sessions, it's six dollars eighty cents for the week. Uh one scout was there for all six weeks. I I found it interesting that uh. It was under the latest approved methods as directed by the National Council. But because it was in association with Stratford Inn, there was indoor bathing. Uh the the tennis courts and basketball and or baseball and volleyball that the uh resort offered. There was deep sea fishing, off the pier, just in the surf fishing, uh canoeing, hiking, and educational outdoor training. There was a published schedule for it. Uh obviously, there must have been a bugler camp because there are a lot of bugle calls. But again, you can see there's uh lots of um inspections and cleanup time. I'm assuming where it says court, that this is indoors at the inn, but there's swimming in the morning and the afternoon. Uh drill with staves, hiking and scouting activities, and instruction for uh rank advancement. So this is uh the camp. You can see there's uh lots of eucalyptus trees, uh wall tents. Uh he, the upper right is uh presumably inspection of the uh scouts bedding in their materials. I think this is probably posed picture of a sing-along. Uh you can see they're doing nineteen nineteen version of rescue breathing. On the beach. Del Mar, a a lot of San Diego has bluffs. So to get down to the beach, uh a lot of times the access is not too easy. So it's up and down the bluffs. This is the cooking facility. Again, we had inspection and flag ceremony. And the um a lot of the scouts are in full and complete scout uniform. So thi- this is twenty twenty. It's not surprising that the ocean hasn't changed its view much. Uh so you can see there, there's bluffs here. Railroad tracks still exist. Amtrak goes up and down this every day. Uh this bridge here was not built while the camp was operating. If you're into golf, Torrey Falls Golf Course is here in Point Loma. Which we'll visit in a couple of camps is down here. So next, we're gonna go off to Camp uh Palomar. So Palomar uh is probably about a, today, over an hour drive from downtown San Diego. It's at about um fifty or five thousand feet of elevation. Uh although it's high in the mountains, in the summer, it's still quite uh warm. So the the camp was held at Bailey Resort in Dome Valley on Palomar Mount. Uh they arranged with the army for kitchen trailers to come up there. To the best of what I could find, there was no swimming pool up there, so they used the natural swimming holes for their bathing and swimming activities. Uh one of the newspaper articles talked about how the scouts were spooked by the cattle that roamed up there. There were cattle and uh actually hogs up there as well. At the camp, there was emphasis on uh. Scout craft instruction for first class and second class and hiking up in the mountains. And this is before the Hale Observatory was built on Palomar Mountain. Uh here you can see uh Dome Valley, there are cattle back in here. It's mostly pine. This scout here has a patrol flag. When you blow it up, it looks like either some sort of stag or deer of some sort. But again, they're in pup tents, a few closed pictures or posed pictures. So the the this, this building here is the Bailey Resort. This flatbed truck is what they use for transportation from downtown San Diego up to the camp. Again, we had inspection. You can see a lot of World War One surplus uh mess gear. Tents all in a line, so it's it's mostly just um triple uh. Standard scout craft camping in a primitive area of camp. Dome Valley in nineteen thirties, they started a uh the California State Park system. It's part of the park. So there's no development, so it looks pretty much the same. The the Bailey's um resort still exists. It's uh, it caters to outdoor weddings and uh resort camping right now. So next, we're gonna visit Camp Point Loma uh in downtown San Diego. So Point Loma is where the lighthouse of Cabrillo National Park is out there. It was held at uh Fort Rosecrans Military Reservation. At the time, it was an army base. It's currently owned by the Navy. Uh there was a nominal fee, but apparently the uh army paid for almost everything. Uh the scouts got to stay in uh the the military quarters. Visitors could, you'd meet them in the library or reception rooms. Got to use the bases, bowling alleys, theater, gym, tennis courts. Baseball diamond, uh plenty of room for outdoor sports. Uh the military provided all of the um equipment. And uh included, I think one of the highlights was a tour to the new lighthouse. Uh currently, the new lighthouse is still in operation and it's over a hundred years old. Uh so here you can see the um, a lot of these um quarters and buildings still exist. This is all under Department of Defense uh jurisdiction, so uh Google Maps and I are not allowed to go on the base. This fellow here, and I'm pretty sure is the scout exec, because if you look at this patch here, it it looks pretty much to me like a bullion. But um again, there's inspections and parade. Uh swimming was in the bay. There's the the campfire activities. They just brought some logs out onto the beach area. So uh Point Loma Reservation, it was a um, it was there to guard the entrance of the bay. Uh so there are lots of artillery pieces, which are obviously a magnet for scouts to crawl all over. So there are lots of artillery pieces, which are obviously a magnet for scouts to crawl all over. And again, there, there's no current picture. Next, we're going to go visit Hubbard Grove. So this is in, just outside of Descanso, California, which is. Although prob- I'm not certain if Highway eighty was in use in nineteen twenty-four. I think it is twenty-three, but Descanso is just off the highway, which is probably why they used it. It's at about thirty-five hundred feet. It was held at a resort, the resort was actually a popular mountain vacation escape for people from San Diego area. The Marine Corps provided transportation for the scouts up to the facility. The highlight of the resort was a heated swimming pool, so this is nineteen twenty-four. Again, this is scout craft instruction, hikes, swimming, first class, second class instruction. There aren't a lot of pictures for this camp, it was only held for a year. So there are, thi- this is the resort. This resort operated up until the fifties, and it was a bit of a dude ranch. This is the outdoor swimming pool that was heated. This is based on this young lady's bathing attire, this isn't a period piece or a period picture from nineteen twenty-four. Although Descanso, Google Maps has visited the. It hasn't made it to Hubbard Grove. So Hubbard Grove is named after this grove of oak trees. This, this is the resort area here in the winter, this is the Sweetwater Reservoir. So the, the oak trees are probably a couple hundred years old. This would probably be considered a primitive camp now, but this is, I think, the parade area and just some scout craft instruction. Again, there's no, I haven't made it out there recently, so no pictures of its current facility. Next, we're gonna visit Camp Fletcher, which is near Lake Quiemacan at forty-six hundred feet. So Lake Quiemaca is at the time and still is part of the reservoir system for the city. Or the county. So Ed Fletcher, who purchased a lot of properties after he went into business for himself. He donated five acres of land up on the slope of North Peak for the council camp. The deed to the gift was, as long as the council was there, they could get the property free. A lodge was built on the property. Olmstead was a prominent architect in San Diego and a member of the executive board. So there was a mess hall on one end, meeting rooms and sleeping accommodations on the other. There was a swimming pool. It doesn't appear that the swimming pool itself was on the camp property. Rotary later built the first aid cabin, which overnight, there was a heater that overheated and it burned down. During some summers, the Sea Scouts were responsible for the aquatics program. Swimming in the pool, boating and fishing at the lake. So this is the council's primary camp during the Depression. So you can see before the Depression, it was eight dollars plus transportation. The council purposely held the camp at a lower rate, at a loss, so that more scouts could attend. So it was four dollars fifty cents with transportation. In one of the articles, I found this interesting, in nineteen thirty-two, there were five hundred and sixty council summer camps. Ninety-three percent of which were inspected by the National Council. So along with scout craft instruction, some of the hikes were to an abandoned gold mine. To the highest point in the state park, North Peak, where there's a ranger station, mostly a fire lookout. And then a spring, Azalea Springs. Troops or scouts could attend the camp in three different manners. The troop itself could organize the program as long as it met certain standards. Bring their own food and everything on the council property. Or the troop could go to the, the camp and the camp would provide meals and equipment. Or what would now be called a provisional scout, where scout could just go up there and the leadership would be provided. So reservoirs in San Diego County, there's no swimming allowed in them. You can put a boat in them, but you're not supposed to put your hands in them, except if you're fishing with waders. So the count, the camp's water was based on a spring. And in nineteen thirty-eight, the state said the spring isn't sufficient for the camp. I'm not sure if it was because of quantity or quality of the water. But the scouts had to abandon the camp in, after the nineteen thirty-eight season. Again, there's a, a published schedule for this. I'm not quite sure what memetic exercises are. If you look nowadays, apparently it's a trendy way of exercising muscles. But you can see their scout craft signaling, first aid, first swimming in the morning, in the afternoon. Inspections, I like the siesta time, all the hikes, colors, reports of the day. And campfire program and including vaudeville stunts with tattoo and taps at nine thirty. So this is Olmstead Lodge, this picture I think is from nineteen thirty-three. You can see up here, occasionally, the council called itself San Diego Area Council. Thi- this is the, the camp's cook, apparently he was there most of the entire time the council operated the camp. He was well-respected and he fed good chow. So here's the swimming pool, this is looking, the lake itself is off to the left, this is looking southwest. Th- this is the lake, the camp itself would have been up in this general vicinity, this is North Peak. So it would have been up in this general vicinity, and it's about a mile or so height to the camp, to the lake. You can see there's still inspection, they had developed sites with lots of rock work. And again, this is mostly oak trees in this general vicinity. This truck again was the transportation from the council to offices up to camp. This is the parade field with a view of the lake. Hopefully, this wasn't a, a nature hike, but this rattlesnake measured over five feet in length. Again, this is a picture of the lake from the camp. This is Stonewall Peak, which Walker Kush used a lot. This is the ranger station, fire lookout on top of Middle Peak. This is the only known items from the camp. This is a trifold camp flyer, this is from nineteen twenty-eight. The newspaper articles suggest that they published one of these every year, but we've only ever found the nineteen twenty-eight ones. This picture here is actually from Camp Del Mar in nineteen nineteen. This is a postcard for the camp with Olmstead Lodge. And this is a little silk ribbon that was for honored campers. A lot of the newspaper articles talked about either honored campers or good campers. It appeared most, most scouts, if they were good citizens and worked diligently, became honored campers. So this is currently Lake Quiemaca, this is a little bit lower down on the slope of North Peak. This is from around the, the fire station. Camp Walker Kush, when we get there, is on the other side of the lake, right around here on this big field right here, this meadow. So, but before we get to Walker Kush, we're gonna visit Camp Fenton. This is another camp I was unaware of, it's in San Pascual Valley at around seven hundred feet of elevation. It was held in Bandy Canyon on the ranch of H.G. Fenton. As an aside, H.G. Fenton still exists and the development company owns the building I work in. So this was a camp for underprivileged scouts, so any scout who is deemed worthy of summer camp got to attend for free. And Henry Fenton sponsored up to a hundred and sixty scouts per summer on his ranch. It appears they used some of his buildings, but the program was morning and afternoon swims. Evening campfire, scout craft instruction and daily hikes. I have no pictures per se of this camp. So this fellow here is Henry Fenton and his wife. San Diego, a lot of times has fires in East County, so this is the two thousand seven. Witch fire, which was burned through parts of the canyon. You can see here it's rebuilt, Bandy Canyon still exists, it's a resort. And it's a, I think their primary business is probably outdoor weddings. So we're gonna get to our last camp, which is Walker Kush. So Walker Kush is on the property of Rancho Quiemaca State Park. The Girl Scouts and the Campfire Girls already had established camps on, in the park. And the park commission wanted the Boy Scouts to have a, a camp too, especially since the nearby camp Fletcher was condemned. So their only request was that a separate corporation run the camp. So there was no favoritism to the Boy Scouts. So the Quiemaca Boy Scout Camp Association was formed, they signed a lease in nineteen thirty-eight. In nineteen thirty-nine, Imperial Yuma Council asked if they could join the association. The bylaws were amended and they became board members. And all these board members were members of the executive board of their respective councils. Henry Atherton was the lead for this, he, he was a lawyer whose son was in scouting. And he served as a council president in either the late thirties or the early forties. He's the only one the council has bestowed a title of, um, council president emeritus. So he arranged for a lot of redwood lumber from Northern California to be transported down through the building. The Civilian Conservation Corps did some of the design and provided most of the labor to build the camp. The initial cost for the camp was thirteen thousand dollars. Most of that was raised through civic groups and businesses and some individuals. The camp was opened in nineteen forty for both short-term camp and long-term camp. Since this camp existed after the war briefly, Imperial Yuma Council. Withdrew from the association nineteen fifty. There were plans for the, a pool from the start, it never, it took fifteen years before it got there. So the pool was finally dedicated nineteen fifty-three, shortly after a new well was. Drilled because they were using a spring for their water source. The association dissolved in nineteen fifty-five and the lease was transferred to San Diego County Council. The council continued using the camp until the late eighties for Boy Scout Resident Camp. Nineteen seventy-two was the first time I was there for scout camp. When Cub Scouts started camping for long-term camp, the camp transitioned to. Being a resident camp for Cub Scout Camp and long-term camp for Boy Scout units stopped in nineteen ninety. The lease expired in nineteen thirty, nineteen ninety-eight. The state wanted some significant construction in the camp. And maintenance that the council couldn't afford, so they let the lease expire. Although I have pictures from much later on, not much from the nineteen forties. This picture here is the meadow that we saw from the other view. This is from the opposite side, so the camp is, I think, what we're looking at. There were a lot of Native American archaeological sites in Califor- in the state park. So all over camp, there are the, the grindstones that you can do. Here it talks about grinding corn, but is generally considered mostly they ground egg corns, which, since these are oak trees, was readily available. So this, this is the dining hall that the CCC built. This postcard's from probably the sixties, where you can see the front of the dining hall. This was our campfire ring, there are all sorts of grind holes underneath this big oak tree. The pool was off to the right of the postcard here on the right. This camp actually had some patches. So the first summer, the inaugural season, there were almost four hundred patches or four hundred campers. So presumably around that many patches were made. Some of the patches have these green stars on them, which this denoted they were an honor camper. So this, and this patch is modeled on the Imperial Yuma Council Camp, San Felipe. Which would have said nineteen thirty-nine Camp San Felipe. Nineteen forty-one, there were five hundred and seventy-three campers. We're pretty sure this is the camp fr- the patch from nineteen forty-one. Twill, this is about four inches across, the green H is for the honored campers. And the brown H is for good campers, the green can, the green H is much easier to find. This felt patch here is from the forties at some point, we're not quite sure when it's from a. Hat patch, there are blue and green versions of this patch that Rick Ross still has on hats. So after the camp, the less, the lease expired. Five years later, a fire went through the camp. It burned two hundred and seventy-five thousand acres, at the time it was the largest wildfire in the county. Unfortunately, it's down to like number four or five right now. It was during the Santa Ana, which means the winds are coming from the, the desert. So it's an east wind, a novice camp hunter got lost, he built the signal fire. The fire got away from him and about close to three thousand homes were burned. It, it made it, the fire and the winds were such that it actually jumped Interstate fifteen. Which is four lanes wide in both directions and burned part of suburbia. So most of the CCC buildings that were on the, the state park property, including the dining hall, were destroyed. So they were really good representations of the work that the CCC did in California. And since the fire, the property where Walker Kush was, hasn't been developed. Just to show what it's like, this is the dining hall where about the only thing that survived were the walls and the fireplace. Eighteen years later, it's cleaned up a bit, and this is what it looks like now. But since I don't want to end on that picture, even out of some destruction, sometimes you can get nice aesthetically pleasing pictures. So this is from Kevin Key Photography, and he's got a time lapse on YouTube of Milky Way. And so with that, any questions or comments?